Welcome everyone to our January. What is it Coffee Talk? It's officially the Berlin Select Board meeting for Thursday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. As I said before recording started, we do have a couple of quick formal business items that we have to do here as a select board before we'll jump into some of the presentations for tonight. And before I even do those, we will dispense with the disclaimers. Let's see, meetings of the Berlin Select Board are generally recorded for transmission on both the Berlin Cable Access Channel and YouTube. Your voice and your image and your telephone number may be recorded. This is also let you know that Coffee Talk is an open meeting of the Berlin Select Board dedicated discussing issues and hearing presentations, but generally does not include normal business unless deemed necessary. To prevent the any violation of open meeting rules, select board members might be restricted what we can say or respond to items that have not been already published on the agenda. So we're not trying to be, so I'm now off my script, but we're not trying to be evasive. We have to stop, but since you know, if something comes up, we're not allowed to debate or discuss with each other because it was things that weren't already on the agenda. That said, we have two quick new business items. The first one is to, you'll get to see how exciting the select board meeting can get. The first is to approve House Bill number five, four, two, six, titled An Act to Authorize the Town of Berlin to Grant Up to Two Additional All Alcohol Beverage Licenses Not to Be Drunk on the Premises, as approved via Article Four on November eighth, twenty twenty-one Special Town Meeting. And as further revised by the Joint Committee on the Council, the Consumer Protection and Professional License or Version dated December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. This is required that the legislature right now is meeting to introduce bills and we have until what tomorrow to get this in? To have these actually considered during this legislative session. And so we've taken this moment to have that debate discussion vote.
And is that okay for a motion, Scott? What you just read?
I think so, yes.
Okay, then I'm gonna say so moved.
And seconded.
Is there other discussion? I don't believe so. And so we have to do individual votes. So Hawkins, I.
Keith, I.
Stone, I.
And since as part of the submission, we need to include the minutes of the meeting that passed that, I'm actually asking to approve and pre- approve and release pre-drafted minutes for this meeting regarding to the vote we just took. Are people gonna be fine with a short minutes that basically just say we voted on what we just voted on?
If you'd like, I can read what has been drafted up, Scott, just for the record, if that's helpful.
Sure.
I was just gonna say that the, you know, meeting opened at six thirty P M. It's open session of the Berlin Select Board Thursday, January nineteenth. The board unanimously voted three, zero Hawkins, Keith and Stone to approve House Bill number fifty-four, twenty-six, titled An Act Authorizing the Town of Berlin to Grant Up to Two Additional All Alcohol Beverage Licenses Not to Be Drunk on the Premises as approved via Article Four, November eighth, twenty twenty-one Special Town Meeting. As further revised by the Joint Committee on Consumer Protection and Professional Licenseur, version dated December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Yep.
I do see that in the second line should be six thirty. Not six.
Sixty at the second line.
Oh, thank you. I didn't see that. Yep, at the top, Mary, where the date is, it says six sixty, not six thirty. If you could just correct that. Thank you very much, Chris.
Is there a motion to approve those and release them?
So moved.
And seconded.
I think we're ready to vote. Hawkins, I.
Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Great. Thank you everyone in the audience for letting us do that little bit of business prior to getting into our normal Coffee Talk agenda. And so I see a fairly decent crowd out there. And I think we should start, I think our first person is our new state Senator Robin Kennedy. He's going to say hi to us and give us a couple of little updates out there. I think she is what sworn in last week? And I know there's all this swearing ins and this made news. I just don't know exactly the day that the Senate was signed in, but.
Yes, January fourth, so it seems to be a hundred years ago and just yesterday at the same time, but it's it's so good to see all of you and Kristen as you're also getting settled in in your role and hopefully, I think a couple of months ahead of me now, so hopefully getting all settled in and Peg Christine, it's good to see you, Mary. It's good to see you all. And for those that I can't see on the call, it's always good to be with you and it seems like it was just yesterday with the last Berlin Coffee Talk, so appreciate the opportunity to join you again. And I know Representative Meg Kilcoin is also joining us this evening. Her and I are off to a great start, working together in collaboration, both to support Berlin and thank you for discussing it, making sure that home rule petitions that are important to the town and issues now important to the town of Berlin are getting moved forward. I look forward to spending much more time in the in the months and years ahead, both getting to know the community, getting to know the matters that are important to you so that I can do what's my most important job, which is making sure that we're delivering resources back to the community. One exciting update that I know or hope many folks in Berlin will appreciate that as I'm going through the process of staffing up in my office, the first appointment I made was my chief of staff and someone who's very familiar, Lisa Wasaki from the town of Berlin will be serving as my chief of staff in my office. So I think many people either on this screen right now or certainly watching, I know how to get in touch with her, but certainly I want to spend as much time in the community as possible, so I look forward to doing so and happy to talk about priorities. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but happy to talk about any priorities that I'll be working on or certainly can save that for the next time we're together.
At the last Berlin Zone of Berlin Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, I was asked by the members to request that our Senator and Representative work on the legislation to keep the online platforms as part of the open meeting law. I just wondered if that was on your radar.
So can I jump in or should we? I don't know. I just wanted to jump in because this was a conversation that I know not only Berlin, but many of towns in my district and across the Commonwealth are concerned about. We're currently still operating under emergency rules. I think, given that we're have had a pretty steady, at least thus far, transition back into a post-COVID world, which we're still living in. This is going to be an ongoing conversation. I know that the House and Senate were looking at this carefully last session. Out of caution, they did extend those remote rules, but you know, I don't have a definitive timeline for you now since we just began the new session. But I know this was an ongoing conversation last time around, certainly something that we are well aware of and how this affects how municipal government will function. So we certainly want to make sure that not only are we taking into account best practices that and the input from our local municipalities, but we're also doing so in a way that's going to give every town enough time to have input and also adjust to whatever decisions are made to make whatever, whatever is decided to make permanent. So.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just working very well for some groups.
Yeah.
Others prefer to meet in person, which is fine, but they really, really think it's working well for them as a group. So I appreciate it.
No, of course. And please feel free to, you know, whatever has been working even on the individual, even for the town of Berlin itself, please share that with the Senator and I, and we'd be happy to pass that along to. I believe that this is before the municipalities committee or will likely be before them, but we'll be happy to pass that along to those that are kind of looking more closely at this area.
Okay, thank you.
Robin, what are some of the things you are, I don't even know like what committees you're on or some of the sort of your favorite topics that you might be working on or looking at in your first legislative session?
Sure. Well, for committees, we'll have to come back to you on that as assignments will probably get made at the beginning of February, which is hopefully when we'll also get our permanent office. So in terms of where to find us in the State House and committee assignments, I will certainly, hopefully by the next conversation, we'll be able, I'll be able to share that update with you, but what I can say and what I talked about and I've already started as we're filing legislation this week is as you're probably well aware, filing deadline is tomorrow. So Rep Kilcoin and I are working around the clock now to make sure we get all of our bills filed. But in terms of priorities for me, you know, as I spoke about often, really supporting investment in the care economy workforce. I'm going to be certainly working alongside Senator Jason Lewis, who's the Chair of the Education Committee on the Senate Side to help reintroduce and pass legislation that's going to improve early education and care, both making it more affordable and accessible as well as some kind of continuing some investments into supporting the workforce and workforce development, which is badly needed. One of the bills that I've already filed that again speaks to the care economy will be starting a conversation about increasing the minimum wage for human service individuals in the care economy. So that's anyone that's any human service provider. Those out there that will know that are tied to Chapter two fifty-seven, which is the state reimbursement rate for human service providers, nursing home employees, home health aides. Again, we are desperately in need of building back these workforces and we know that low pay is one of the biggest challenges that that these organizations face and being able to maintain and build back their workforce. Another big priority of mine that that I've already really jumped in is in supporting our regional transportation, particularly the W R T A in our region. And want to be crystal clear as we're having these conversations, I'm a huge proponent of keeping it fare-free to increase accessibility and ridership and affordability. At the same time, I also appreciate that we need to increase and expand our service delivery. So I'm working very closely with the delegation, you know, not only to increase and improve service where it exists, but also look to increase into new towns, into new spaces, and also to be able to help link up. And this is not overnight, certainly days down the road, months, years down the road, but certainly to help link up some of the R T A systems because I'm a huge proponent in public transportation and think we need to make sure that, and I know Representative Kilcoin joins me in this, that as there is investment in public transit in the Boston area and the N B T A, we need to be pushing to ensure that there's regional equity and investment in the R T A system. So happy to get into detail and some I, you know, certainly have multiple other bills that I have filed or I'm working to file. But those are really the priorities, early education and care, the care economy, workforce development and investment in our public transportation system.
Nice.
Go ahead, Scott.
No, there you go.
So Robin and Meg, you know that one of my big things is grants and sometimes we find out too late. You know, sometimes we might need some help in finding them. So was wondering how you both would be able to help us with that because we're going to need grants. I mean, luckily we received an eight thousand dollar grant to go around and fix a few of our ADA items, but there's a lot more that need to be fixed, but we'll start small and we know that grants, you know, unfortunately are going to be the way to help supplement budgets that, you know, there's projects that need to be done, but there's really no more money left in the pot. So anything that you could do to help to say, hey, here's a link, here's where to go, here's some stuff that's coming up would be more than greatly appreciated.
Totally. And Peg, I think one area where you can help us a little bit with that and Kristen, this probably would be something our offices could work on together. If you have any sort of direction, as you know, there are so many grant programs out there, but sometimes it's helpful for us to try to point you in the right direction in terms of your specific projects that might be that you're looking at or even if it's just an area like, you know, roads, transportation, things like that. There was a lot of grant programs. I know that we're started with the ARPA spending bill that we did both that we finalized in November as well as the two budget cycles. So we're always happy to try to reach out to the administration, try to get a list for you. But a lot of times those are administrated, those are run by different executive offices. And so there's not necessarily like a hub, which actually might be good for maybe a long-term discussion, creating sort of an easier access to those grants. But in the meantime, even if we have kind of an area like is it environmental, is it recreational? Is it infrastructure? Is it small business, economic development, things like that? That can help us. And Berlin, while it is tough, I know Berlin, you know, it's it's some of these smaller communities have a tougher time getting some of these bigger grants, but Berlin does, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, qualify as a rural community by certain statutory definitions. So I think it's I want to say you have to be under like seven thousand people. It might be five thousand people or something like that. You're there. So that kind of qualifies you for some other specific grant programs out there too. And I think, you know, speaking to priorities to piggyback a little bit about what Senator Kenny was saying, I think both of us want to work together that, you know, we both represent districts that have diverse diverse, a diverse town, different towns, right? Each of them have different needs, different makeup, socioeconomic demographics. So we want to make sure that when we're talking about spending money, that we are ensuring that towns like Berlin are not left behind because even if it's, you know, you may not be the population of a city, but that doesn't mean that you can't, you don't deserve the same support and infrastructure and resources that other of these larger communities have. So yeah. Just call us and just let's have a conversation. We'll try to see what's out there for you guys.
You know what? And I think the ones that you rattled off, you know, kind of like hit the nail on the head, you know, there's always conservation issues. There's always road issues, you know, that need to be, you know, bridges that need to be fixed in town. There's, you know, building issues and infrastructure issues that we need to look at that, you know, even though we were fortunate to receive a good pot of money from ARPA, we know that that money is going to go very quickly. Once we start ramping up and have started ramping up, looking at building assessments and other things that are needed to help push the town forward. You know, we're fortunate to have a shopping mall on this end that's doing really well and a shopping mall on this end that's not doing so well. So you know, kind of the idea of what can we do to this side of town to help bring in more business to that? Because I know one of the, you know, chief concerns for folks are tax rates. You know, and as your commercial goes down, unfortunately, your resident tax needs to go up. So, you know, we want to try and balance them out. So anything that you have and Scott, maybe in a future Select Board meeting, you could just jot a note down to say, hey, what are just some of the areas don't need to be specific? Yeah. Chrome out and then we can shoot them back to Senator Kennedy and Rep Kilcoin to help us get started.
Yeah, I'd also recommend, oh, sorry, Scott, didn't mean to.
I was gonna say, I think one of the great starting lists might be even capital planning's sort of document of things we're looking for that were quite ready for town meeting, or I mean, like, if we had money, we would do it, but didn't make the top priorities. Or even some of the top priorities that stretch some of the money that that we were thinking we might use it free cash or other things like that. We might have a good, we might have a good starting spot to share without a lot of work.
I can share too that we're in the process of putting together the capital plan for F Y twenty-four right now that includes some of those projects that you're mentioning, Scott, that didn't make it perhaps into the F Y twenty-three budget, also some projects that have moved up perhaps on the list, given different priorities or shifting needs. And Luis has been putting that together from the Capitol Committee. I just got my first look at it. So it's in draft form. And once that gets a little bit more established, I can certainly send that over to you.
I'd also recommend too, and this is something that I say with full disclosure, there's no guarantee and I wouldn't recommend it being something that you know, is for large projects, but there are certain, at certain points, there are opportunities for us to file earmarks in the budgetary spending bills. Now typically those projects, again, I caution that there's no guarantee that those are going to be in the final budget, but if you, I mean, there is sometimes a chance that you can get spending for maybe, you know, fifty K in those in that ballpark area. So when you guys are developing that capital plan, I would just ask if you have any projects or ideas that or places where maybe that spending range can be used, just create a punch list and send it to us. That helps us when we have those opportunities to at least attempt to get some of that money to help what you guys are working on. And the good thing about it is it's more or less on a regular schedule. Now that COVID, we're kind of past the COVID situation. So the House will be debating their budget process in, you know, according to plan in April. So that's kind of like the timeline that we're looking at here. So and happy to talk more offline about those types of things, but just wanted to throw that out there. I know how hard it is for so many of these towns and I know every little bit helps. And while it isn't a guarantee and it isn't something that you can necessarily plan on, it does help us at least do our part in the State House to figure out where we might be able to 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 help and chip in a little bit here and there.
Sure. And that opportunity is always so greatly appreciated. And I know in the past too, in the former communities I've worked in, there are bond bill opportunities and you know, sometimes I always say that bond bills sometimes are like wishing upon a star, but sometimes it actually does come true and the bond bills do get funded. And I've had, you know, requests the day of or the night before, can you send us some items to put in the bond bill? Come up. I don't care if it's like two in the morning. I'm happy to get some things to you.
I think our offices made a few of those calls last session and we did get some money for Berlin in the bond bill. So we're happy, Kristen, I think it was before you came on, we, but we'd be happy to kind of send you a summary of that stuff if it's useful for your records.
That would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and, you know, Senator Corden was our partner last session, but I really excited to work with Senator Kennedy on advocating for you guys on that stuff too. So.
That's wonderful.
And I would just jump in just to echo, you know, what Meg said, everything Rob Kilcoin just said, but certainly want to add to, you know, as I mentioned, would love to come out and spend, you know, time with you, visiting in some of your departments. I think because the other thing that we might be able to offer is to say, you know, oh, this is something you're looking at, even if you don't know it's a priority, but that we might know of something that's happening and or where there might be some other opportunities and or ideas for where there's opportunities for collaboration or, you know, some of the innovation, innovative things that are happening at the state level. So certainly welcome that opportunity to come out and visit different spaces. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
I was gonna say, we'll make sure that we invite you guys back when it's warm, since I froze you both the beginning of December, you know, coming out to hang around with us and smiley. So we'll make sure that there's something warm that we can bring you back and have you part with. It was just kind of cool standing there and, you know, a few people were like, who's that? I'm like, that's our senator. That's our, you know, like, they're here. I'm like, yeah, they're here. So, you know, thank you again for for coming on out. It was great.
No, it's great. It was great. I think, you know, we're just happy to be, we're happy we're doing these events again, right? Like, it's crazy to think two years ago, we weren't doing anything. So anytime you guys invite us down, I'm always happy to get to come on down to Berlin and have a good time. It's always a fun time.
Awesome. Thank you.
Well, and while I have both of your ears, well, first, Rep Kilcoin, I wanted to thank you and your office, particularly Dewey, for the assistance on that home rule petition. As I know, it got a little complicated. We had to give like the change in language and get that voted. And I just appreciate your help and getting us some guidance on how to move forward with that. It was really greatly appreciated. And, you know, also while I kind of have both of your ears on priorities, one of the things that I've noticed that helps smaller communities like ours are the regional planning commissions. Like Central Mass Regional Planning Commission has been really huge for us in terms of helping fill some of the gaps that we can't fill. They're able to help us with grants. They're able to help us with planning for projects. You know, where we may not have the funding or even the full need to have a full-time town planner or a full-time conservation person or a full-time this, they're able to bridge some of those gaps for us. So if funding opportunities ever appear for those types of agencies, I think, you know, thinking of communities of our size, that is a huge benefit because they also put a lot of time into regionalization and creating, you know, positions that can be shared amongst towns. And that's one of the things that we've been having conversations with them about as well.
No, that's great. And I just want to add quickly, Senator Kennedy has already been an incredible partner on that particular piece of legislation. It's not easy to come in and then have the House rep being like, hey, there's this bill that had this really complicated thing happen to it and we're gonna file it this session, but she's been fantastic. And I think, you know, unfortunately, the legislative process can be long, but I think the good news is we worked out some of the, some of the issues. And in general, you know, these things take about a couple of years on average. So I think we'll hopefully be able to work together to get it through both chambers and just let us know when you have questions on its status and things like that.
Great. Thank you so much.
Looking forward to it. And so are a couple of people in town.
I'm sure.
Whoops. Meg, is there a chance, did you get a chance to say something to your priorities for the session as well? I know we wanted a little bit.
I know. I am. Thank you, Scott. I think, you know, like the Senator said, we're in the middle of bill filing. I'm actually in my legislative office right now. I have my, take my blur off so you can see it. It's a little messy at the moment because we moved in late with COVID, but I'm just shifting it over there because I have actually acquired, wait, no, that's if you see over there, those are two chairs from the old Berlin Town Hall. So I try to collect little pieces, maybe some are artworks, some are different items from each town. And so I was really excited that, A, those fit in my tiny office and B, that I have a little piece of Berlin. I'm gonna try to clean them a little bit. They're a little dusty, but now that COVID's over, you are all welcome. And for those watching, everyone's welcome to come and tour the State House, see my office and do an actual tour of the very cool building that it's in. So yeah, we're still working hard on filing bills. I'm really excited. You know, I have a pretty interesting array of bills that I'm filing, particularly ones around healthcare. There's one I'm filing related to cancer testing. It's kind of a niche issue, but it's an era, an issue I got to learn a little bit about last session. And then obviously some of the local pieces on a broader scale. I know that, you know, for our districts, community hospitals are a huge space to access healthcare, both Berlin, you know, you may go to Clinton Hospital or Marlboro Hospital. I'm actually not sure which one will be closer. It might depend, but they need help. And so I was, I know in the House, I think we're going to be looking at trying to create some support for them pretty soon. And so that's an issue that I'm I look forward to working on. There's still, I think, some ARPA money that needs to be spent. So some of these conversations we're having now, you know, probably are going to roll into that, depending on what shape that takes. And then, you know, I think Senator Kennedy's emphasis on the care economy is huge. So excited to learn from her and support her in those efforts. And then just, you know, in general, gosh, I could talk for like an hour about it. I mean, all the things we need to do. You know, I had some conversations this week regarding vocational ed. Berlin is a part of Assabit Regional, but we're seeing, you know, those demands for those, that education is rising and accessibility is becoming an issue. And these are great schools. So we want to make sure that students have the opportunity to attend when they want to. I'm sure I'm forgetting a bunch of priorities here, but the other thing I'd add for those watching, you know, a lot of our priorities are also informed by you. So please, you know, if there's things that you're interested in, if you want us to pay attention to, please call us and let us know. There's probably going to be about five thousand bills filed in this week alone, maybe more. So there's always areas that need to be addressed and considered and so I'm just excited to get to work.
Is there any things regarding PFAS and water testing? Because it was last last year, year before, somebody came around and they were testing a bunch of wells. If you signed up for it in town, hey, you know, what's living in your well?
So Speaker Pertem, I know in the House, Speaker Pertem Hogan has led a task force and I know the Senate was involved too. I apologize. I don't remember which Senator was on was working on it, but I know we've had a lot of conversations about that issue. I know Princeton, which is not too, too far from Berlin, but it's right next to Sterling, which is part of my district as well, had a huge issue with that and their water supply. And I think we're all aware that this is going to be a problem that is not going to just go away. So I think we've been looking at ways in which trying to stay on top of the issue. It's obviously an expensive issue. It's good to see that the town is being proactive on your end to to take care of it. I know that there's a report issued by that task force. I'd be happy to kind of send you guys over what what they're looking at, kind of their initial findings, but I think that's an ongoing conversation. So please keep us a post, please keep us aware ASAP. If there are things that you discover in town, if there's anything worth that testing, that we want to know because we know how difficult that has been for some municipalities that have had to deal with that. I became aware of it years ago. It was first, I think, discovered in a lot of firefighting equipment. And they were discovering that there was correlations between firefighters with cancer and that and being exposed to PFAS via equipment. And in your sense, it's just gotten bigger and bigger and bigger. So we want to make sure that we're we're equipped to deal with that, trying to stay on top of that before it becomes a bigger problem than it is.
Yeah, because I know Merrimack in New Hampshire that they're they're going through a lot. Was it Saint Gobain was up there and the waters are just nasty and cancer rates are through the roof or it doesn't matter age, sex, people are getting hit all over the place. So, you know, granted, Merrimack is this big, you know, and Berlin's this big and we're a little bit different, but still it makes me.
Absolutely. One thing I am deeply concerned about is our area and Berlin, I believe, is included as part of the Wachiesa watershed. You know, like all of the wetland around here is very much intertwined with with a huge source of drinking water over at the reservoir. So if there's PFAS in here, I mean, this is this, this isn't just a Berlin issue. This could impact the entire Commonwealth. So, you know, I think that level, that that obviously, I mean, it would be an urgent matter, no matter if it was isolated to just our community, but I think that level, that that obviously, I mean, it would be an urgent matter, no matter if it was isolated to just our community, but, you know, it bringing the alarm on the ramifications of it being found in our area is extremely concerning. And and just the watershed area in general, protecting that, protecting that resource is a has always been a huge priority of mine because it affects, I mean, it affects every town in the district. You know, we're all part of that natural resource. It's vital and it's, this is a part of it as well. So I think it's a really well taken. So thank you.
And just to add that the importance of us having these conversations back and forth and for us to hear about these issues. You know, I just learned and and I know Lisa's on the call and she was with me, you know, just learned about the fact that, you know, well, water is not as regulated testing required, does have the same testing requirements. And there's not enough community education around the the need to test well water. And there are certainly several chemicals. So that was something that was brought to to my attention for the first time. And so really looking at where there's opportunities, when we see that there's individual issues and and years ago, when I worked in the Senate, I was the constituent services aide, so I have the experience from that side. But really understand that from these one-off kind of issues that arise, that there's very often a trend or a thread or or some some broader programs or or legislation that might be required. So you know, certainly want to echo to to reach out to us and share when when these issues do arise so that we can be responsive.
Well, it's hard, Robin, because, you know, it's like, hey, you know, sure, come and test my well water. Oh, I don't know if I really want to test my well water because if you find stuff in my well water, now I could be facing, you know, thousands of dollars to fix my well water. And not to say that ignorance is bliss, but I think that there's that hesitation of I want to know, but I don't want to know, you know, because we're Berlin and everyone's on wells. So you're kind of thinking you're okay.
No, and absolutely. And that's that's, and I know that there's some groups in the group that we met with is is looking to for, you know, public funding type programs that could, you know, certainly help people that that needed, because you're right, there is, there will be the cost to repair and it can get to be pretty costly. So yeah, exactly. And that's the other piece to to it is where we can not only identify and and help solve issues, but also then help fund solutions of those those challenges. So.
Thank you both. I appreciate it.
Yep. Thank you both, both for attending. And we look forward to working with you folks and stopping by and seeing you in person at the State House around.
Yeah, Tohonto, actually, last summer was the first school to come visit the State House, which was really, really cool. Yeah. We got to bring them in the chamber, in the House chamber. They went, they met the Senate President as well. And I wasn't sure how this was going to go over, but they, we, they were in informal session. So I got to go on the rostrum and inform them that they were, it was recorded in the House Journal that they had visited, that they were there. And then they all erupted into cheers. And I wasn't sure. I mean, I'm not a, I'm not a teen. I'm not sure what's cool, what's not cool. So I thought I was so, I was so glad that they enjoyed it. So it was it was really great that I'm I'm so glad to have students in the State House again. I was so glad to share that experience with them. And I hope that we get to have more classes in here and Senator Kennedy can meet them too. And we can show them what this place is all about, you know?
Awesome. Awesome. Awesome.
Well, thank you both.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
And in our sort of ongoing list of really, I think, incredible people to to speak tonight or say hi tonight, let's bring forward Mike Wakelin, who is our Fire Chief in Waiting. Is that the the title?
Sounds about right.
We've signed, because he's not Fire Chief-elect, you know, you know, because that wasn't elected, it's appointed, but.
Pending.
Pending. And so as he comes forward, I don't know if, Kristen, you want to do a little bit about sort of what the hiring process looked like? And then I think when you're done, Mike will just turn over to you to say hi and tell a few more stories and and what you're looking forward to and here in Berlin.
Sure, absolutely. So the board had brought on MRI to do the recruitment process for the Fire Chief selection. That is the same firm that was used for my recruitment process as well. And we went through and they did a pre-screening and an interview of applicants to make sure that they met the minimum criteria in the documents, I'm sorry, in the job description. And then what we did was interview four candidates. And we were going to probably narrow it down to two and go from there with the possibility of bringing forward two candidates. However, Mike was a real standout above and beyond the other applicants in terms of his experience, knowledge, what he brought to the table in terms of just calmness, personality, presence, really were impressed by his resume, the references and the background check that was done. And so we moved forward with Mike and brought him before the board. And I'm pleased to announce that he has accepted our offer. He is coming and looking forward to being down in Berlin, has already been around a little bit. And I know he and his wife are kind of looking for residents somewhere in the area. So they're very excited to be back in kind of country place like we are here, which is wonderful. So with that, I will turn it over to Mike to speak a little bit more about, you know, his background and why he is interested in coming over to Berlin.
Well, thank you very much. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you. I'm very much looking forward to coming to Berlin. It it's a, it it's an honor. And I thank you for those kind words. My, my daughter lives close by in Massachusetts with my son-in-law and my granddaughter, and that is one of the reasons it's bringing me down to the Commonwealth. Again, full disclosure, I was born in the Commonwealth down on Cape Cod, so that's where I actually originated from. But this, this was a great opportunity for me. It wasn't one that I was necessarily seeking out, but Berlin is a fantastic area. My wife and I are really very excited to be coming to a small rural community. And the town itself is just beautiful. So we've been down in the area. We've been looking for a place to stay that we can call home and come and come down and and be close to family. And I've had the pleasure of meeting some of the staff at Town Hall, at the fire station, the police station. And it has truly been a pleasure so far. Everybody is wonderful. So my, my experience, I have 30 years' experience in the fire service, ranging from, you know, firefighter, paramedic, and up through the ranks of chief. And I'm looking forward to bringing that experience and working with the staff and getting to know everybody at the fire department and taking over the helm from Chief Clark, who has done a phenomenal job with the department down there and the crew that he has.
You left out one thing, Mike. You have a friendly dalmatian.
I do.
That's a very important detail because for me, it's all about dogs. It's so, you know, I just had to share that.
Yes, I do. I I do have a dalmatian that she's about 10 years old. She is a, her name is Lily. She is a sweetheart. And our biggest problem is she thinks that she's everybody's best friend. So she has no fear to walk up and see people and see other other animals. So but yes, that I, there will be a dalmatian in the area.
Dalmatian for the fire truck. Doesn't get much better than a dalmatian with a fire department, so.
And then, Mike, your first day is when again?
Um, I can, I kind of take, I take over officially on February 1st. And I'll kind of be back and forth between Littleton and Berlin, just to kind of transition from New Hampshire down to the Commonwealth. So officially, March 1st, I will take over in a full-time capacity and be there 40 hours plus a week.
And and as people didn't catch, he alluded to his day, he's actually having some time to to work with Chief Clark and get a pretty nice handoff. And so we're hoping that that in the transition, very little is lost. And 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 we'll have a nice sort of smooth transition. Peg, Chris, you have anything else you want to add or say?
Just welcome, welcome. We're looking forward to meeting you in person and and your wife and and just welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, looking forward to coming down and meeting you. And and my wife is just as excited as I am. So she's looking forward to meeting everybody as well.
Mike, it's nice to see you again. I had the walked into Kristen's office one day and well, there you were. So I kind of got a sneak peek to say hi before you came tonight. So thrilled to have you aboard. Lots of work to do. You know, as we talked about, Chief Clark has done some great things to turn the reputation of that department around. So looking forward to you continuing in that role and bringing on the qualified people and maybe bringing back the people who left years ago who might want to come back. So looking forward to you filling those shoes and keeping the fire department where they need to be.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, we look forward to seeing you in just a couple of weeks, actually, down here. So so thanks for joining. I, is there, people, if I have any quick questions for him? If you can raise your hand, I think we can figure out how to do that technologically. Just at the beginning of this conversation, not the end of it. And yes, Mike, you you helped bring ALS, Advanced Life Support, ALS, to your last place. The town is, people if remember at town meeting, we approved doing a study about whether or not ALS or advanced life services would be beneficial to the town or not. And we have some of those reports back and and we look forward to you, Mike, potentially sort of leading a town in the conversation about what might be be right for us.
Yeah, very, very happy to do that. And yeah, just to allude on that, when I took over in Littleton, that was something they had just started doing BLS transport and we initiated initiated the ALS transport and kind of made it into a regional area up up here in New Hampshire and stuff. So it was a very, it's been a very successful program. And it's something even as a firefighter hired into my original job, I became a paramedic and started the ALS transporting service for London area, New Hampshire, when I was hired there. So a lot of experience, that seems to be where my career has been. So I'm looking forward to assisting in that.
Great. Well, thank you very much for coming down. We're going to, again, look forward to seeing you soon.
Same here. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have actually is Victoria, who is our Council on Aging and Social Services Director for the town to talk about some of the various resources that are out there for folks and some exciting things that are going on in in her sort of venue. I know I saw her in the audience at one point. The audience has gotten big enough where I can't see everybody at once. Which is nice.
On the bottom.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody.
Victoria, do you have a PowerPoint presentation? Because if you can't, you have to go away.
Well, then I get to stay, don't I? All right, hold on just a sec. I gotta share my screen. All right. Can you guys hear me? Okay?
Yeah.
All right. All right. So let us do this. All right. And then, come on. All right. So just to give everybody a heads up for some of the upcoming stuff that we have going on on next Wednesday, the 20, oh, I'm sorry, hold on just a sec. All right, on next Wednesday, the 25th, we are having a teen survival stress guide for teens in Berlin and in the greater area. It's a virtual event and we're teaming up with the with, we're teaming up with a local organization that is helping us get awareness out there for teens as well as for parents to help better address mental health issues. So this is kind of step one of what we're looking at. So the thought is that come March, we are planning on doing a mental health webinar, like info for parents. And then we're planning on having another webinar towards the end of the school year for teens, again, talking about, it just basically transitioning back to summer and, you know, a lot of the adjustment that is happening. So that's just a little shameless plug that I have. Just going forward, just generally, as as you guys were saying about resources, the biggest resource right now and the one that would be most timely is for fuel assistance. So in general, in the past, what had been going on with fuel assistance is you needed to make an appointment in MACH in Fitchburg to be a first-time applicant. And then if you approved, you get a yearly mailing to basically recertify your benefits. For the first time ever, they are allowing first-time applicants to apply online through a portal. I've already helped two people this year already apply for fuel assistance. What you can do is, if anybody is interested, you can come down to my office. We can make a, we can basically create a portal account for you, upload all the documentation that's needed and get your application in. What I would suggest to people is that the fuel assistance application time period goes until usually mid-March. And I've even seen people apply into April. But I would advise anybody who is interested or has any questions, call me and get in soon. Because honestly, the sooner you apply, the sooner you're going to hear. If for any reason, when you apply as a first-time applicant, there is a possibility that you may have to go to Fitchburg if they needed any additional information or if there is something that they may need you to sign off on, they will be contacting you directly. And for, just generally speaking, and from all of the public benefits that are really out there, fuel assistance is really the one that I think people, more people qualify for than they realize. You do not have to be a homeowner to apply for fuel assistance. You could be someone who rents an apartment or who is you know, renting a space like in a, or having a condo. You and the way that it normally works is that everybody in your house that's 18 and older, we would have, you know, a driver's license, any kind of verification. It would be proof of income that is coming in, whether you are employed or you're collecting such as social security or pension, anything like that. And the annual cutoff for a household of one is about $44,000. And the cutoff for about a family of two is almost $60,000. So while in unlike something like mass health, they're not looking to see what assets you have in the bank. Obviously, you know, like if you are someone who is doing financially well, it's wonderful. But a lot of times we have residents that I think get caught because while they may be under like the income guidelines, there are other benefits that are unfortunately, because there is that asset-driven, like liquid request. A lot of times, these people then get disqualified for potential benefits. So so like I said, fuel assistance honestly is something that I would suggest, you know, if anybody thinks they may be on a cusp or has any questions, please reach out to me. And I'm still doing work, you know, with Medicaid, housing applications, everything like that. But like I said, this is usually the, it's the time of year. And I know everybody is getting a shock in terms of, you know, I know the electric rates are going up and I know a lot of people are seeing shock, you know, between that and the oil prices. So you know, please, like I said, if you are at all interested, if you have any questions, please reach out. And what we can do is, like I said, I can schedule an appointment. And, you know, I will tell people that, you know, if for any, oops, I'm sorry, if for any reason that if for any reason, you know, you are, you know, unsure, this is also not a one-and-done application as well. So if for some reason you didn't qualify this year, that does not mean that you will not qualify next year. And, you know, we all sometimes have instances of life where things change in a quickly and, you know, very quickly or in a hurry. So I always just tell people like, when in doubt, you can always apply. And the worst that you're going to hear is no, but. So, yeah, that's, that's my big plug for people for, especially for this time of year. But the main reason why I think a lot of people are coming tonight is we're talking about the UMass Community Needs Assessment. So for anybody in the audience who is not aware, earlier in the fiscal, towards the end of last fiscal year, the Select Board had voted to use some ARPA funding to help us get a community needs assessment drawn up with collaboration from UMass Boston Gerontology Institute. So the purpose and the reason why we want this assessment is, as I know our our reps, Kennedy and Gilcoin were talking about earlier, there is a lot of potential funding out there that, you know, Berlin could get to help meet the needs of all of our residents. But because Berlin is so small, it is sometimes difficult to, you know, have our applications sometimes stand out from some of these other bigger cities and towns that may get funneled in more quickly. And we also know too that, you know, there are, there may be some unmet needs out there. And, you know, especially in social services land, I'm, it's it's just me. And I and I know too that there are certain things that, you know, I've had conversations about with residents and it's a good stepping stone. And I know that we have made progress, but I think as we all know, you know, progress, you know, continued progress is needed. So that just kind of gives a general overview. The thought is with this assessment is it is for anybody aged 18 and older. And we're really looking at, you know, are you happy with, you know, how things are going in in Berlin? Do you have any suggestions, you know, like going forward? You know, are you, are you planning on continuing staying in the town long term? And if so, you know, do you have what you think you're going to need in place? You know, I, we have a lot of Berliners who have, you know, gracefully aged in place now for a very long time. And while I am very, very happy about that, and I continue to want to have our residents age in place and while also having new families come in. I am very, very happy about that and I continue to want to have our residents age in place and while also having new families come in. It is also a challenge too, because unfortunately, you know, again, as Rep Gilcoin and Senator Kennedy were saying, you know. It's challenging right now to get staff, you know, in like places like a nursing home or assisted living and. You know, we want it, we want to make sure that our seniors can stay. In aging in place in Berlin and that we can continue to get new families to come in. So what we what we're really looking at is a basically a forty one question survey. Just really asking everybody, you know, are you happy with what's here? We really want to know, like, if you have feedback. It's needed, not only for me, not only for the select board, but for really everybody in town. The way that this is gonna work is that UMass Boston is going to be mailing out postcards to households in Berlin around February fifteenth. About about a week later. Hard copy surveys are going to be nailed out. So as of right now, we have confirmed those sixty and older are going to be mailed a hard paper copy of the survey. That will be returned to Boston. When Kristen and I had met with UMass Boston back in December, they were saying that because Berlin is because of Berlin size. They think they can even have it be so hard copies go out to everybody fifty and older. Which will be great because now it's, you know, there's gonna be no chance of it's gonna help us get a higher completion rate for the survey. For anybody under fifty, what we're gonna have is there's gonna be a QR code like you may see. You know, for various apps, there's gonna be, I believe, a website and a phone number. That you can call as well to complete the survey. So we're gonna have this be as multimodal as possible. Because we want people to be able to complete the survey. In general, there is about a three week window estimated between when these surveys are gonna be mailed out to when they've got to come back. So. The thought is is that it should hopefully give people enough time. If there are any questions, gives them enough time to be addressed and then, you know, we can take it from there. And ultimately, what the game plan is tentatively is sometime in May or early June. UMass Boston is gonna publish the results of what of what the survey findings are. So part of what I want people to just be aware of is in terms of taking the survey. There is gonna be a phone number that will be available with the survey, whether you get a paper copy and it's gonna be on the postcard and we'll. Gonna post all of this information as well. So if you have specific questions. We're gonna refer you to the phone number on through UMass Boston. And the reason why I say that is because. In anonymity is gonna be huge with the survey. Myself, Kristen, the Select Board, no one in town is going to see anybody's particular results. We are gonna get a head count in general. So say, for example, for the thirty four hundred people in town, if two thousand people, you know. Participated in the survey, that's all we're gonna know. We're not gonna know, you know, I'm not, you know, no one's gonna be able to identify, you know, if it's my survey or somebody else's. And we know that that is really important because we want to make sure that people feel comfortable. You know, not only participating in the survey, but just feeling confident that their answers are gonna be, you know, kept confidential. And with that. Because we're using UMass Boston as the conduit, we're not gonna see anything. Every single response, whether you do it through QR code, mailing, you call the phone number to complete the survey by phone. All of that stuff goes directly to Boston. We're not gonna see any of it. When we had met with UMass Boston, the question was asked, do we want to have survey copies in Town Hall? To distribute out to people and honestly, I was against it because I said, I don't want people thinking now that like. You know, if they if they like had particular questions or if they felt like, you know, like, okay, well, now Victoria's gonna know what I'm thinking about this question. I didn't want that to be a hamper or, you know, we just wanted to really truly make sure that people had their anonymity and confidentiality with this. With the survey. So we might get a sample copy that we might try to post in town offices, just so in case if people are nervous about it. They can, you know, come and reference it, but. Ultimately, like I said, this is all gonna be done as, you know, through solely UMass Boston. You know, another thing as well as I know forty questions is to some people that may seem like it's a lot of questions and to others, it's like, well, no, I'm I'm shocked. It's only forty. And my 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 suggestion to you all is when you get your surveys is. If there are particular questions that you don't understand, you can call, but. Even if you answer five questions and submit it, that's still five questions of data that we now have that we didn't have previously. And, you know. When meeting with Dr. Coyle and her team, you know, they said that it's very common to get, you know, partially completed surveys and like I'm. And, you know, she said like, we can still use the data, even if it's just three or four questions. And it will help us get a better understanding as well. So. I just want everybody to be aware that A, this is gonna be, you know, through UMass Boston. We're not gonna have anything to do with the answers, but. You know, if you if for any reason you can't complete the full survey, please submit in what you have, because something is better than nothing. If you guys wanted to reach out to me, I'm gonna probably refer you right back to UMass Boston and I'm not trying to be mean. I just want to respect everybody's privacy and I want to make sure that again, like you all feel comfortable having the survey be completed. This right here is basically a mockup of what the postcard is gonna look like. This is what's gonna be going out pretty much to people. About mid February. So and again, like this isn't the exact postcard, but it's a it's a general mockup of it. So as you all can see, it's the three different levels of how to complete the survey. So like I said, the paper copies are being mailed out to definitely everybody age sixteen older. And we're thinking probably fifteen older, but that we're still working out the details on that one. The QR code that's gonna be there and then if there isn't additional URL address, which I think there's going to be. We'll post it everywhere as well. The QR code we can print and we can have it posted throughout the town as well. So if you're out, say, for example, like at the general store or the post office. We can, you know, blow it up so then you can take the picture of it and then start completing the survey that way. If, you know, for any reason you, you know, misplaced the postcard or whatever. And, you know, the third option here is, as they say, the Gerontology Institute, they do have a direct number. It goes right to them and there are people there that will be able to, you know. Basically go through the survey with you question by question. Give you any clarifying, you know, any clarifying details that you may or may not need. And your survey would be submitted and it will count just as much as if you were to do it through electronic or paper means. This excerpt right here is part of what, again, this is in draft form as of right now, but I just wanted to highlight this. This is kind of the intro paragraph that we're looking at that's gonna be going out on the surveys. And it says, the town of Berlin requests that each resident share their views and experiences about living in Berlin, both now and in the future. This information will be used to inform planning efforts for the town of Berlin as it relates to programming and space. And all of all of your responses will be kept confidential. Please do not include your name or other identifying information on the survey. If you prefer to respond online, please go to the town of Berlin website, which will have that info once it's available. And then if you have questions or you would like assistance completing this survey. Please leave a message for Dr. Caitlin Coyle at the Gerontology Institute at UMass Boston. And the staff's gonna return the call and, you know, we thank you all for participating. So. So I just, I wanted to include this because I think it is really important that, you know, even from UMass side. You know, again, they're the ones that are gonna be handling all of the surveys. There is nowhere on there to put your name. There is nowhere on there to put your birthday. There is nowhere on there to put your favorite color. And I just want people to be aware of that because, like I said, the survey's purpose is really truly there to get a crystal clear picture as to what is going on. As a resident of Berlin and just again to address any, you know, positives, any negatives, anything to work on, any questions. We want to hear about it. So I wanted to include this. And that is my slideshow, so I will stop sharing my screen and I will answer any questions that are out there. Hi. Oh, I figured.
Right, people in the audience, you wanna raise your hands if you have questions, but why don't you start us off, Peggy?
Kristen, you heard me. Victoria heard me. So since there's no identifying information, you know, I'm not gonna sign one that says Pegstone, blah, 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 and send it in. Is there the opportunity? To dissuade people to, you know, folks like me, sixteen and older, that are gonna get the paper card to fill out. But I can also go up and go to the QR code and fill that in too. So. Is there any factorization into that to say?
So that was an excellent question. So this was a concern that was brought up to me by other residents that we that Kristen and I did bring up to UMass Boston. So they have said in the past that in and again, depending on the town or the city that they work with. Every town's gonna have a different requirement. So there may be different parameters with how they conduct their surveys. They had mentioned that in the past, what they've done is they've limited, they they've sometimes in the past been able to use IP addresses when these surveys get completed, like. How many people per IP address are completing said survey? Again, it's completely anonymous. It's not something that they're gonna track you down and be like, oh, look, that's Pegstone. No, it's not done like that. But. The thought was that if, say, for example, you know, you had an IP address that popped off five hundred different, you know, surveys, red flag. So. The only thing with that, though, is if like, if say, for example, like a group of people like at like nineteen Carter or someone decided to take the survey. I don't then want all those results invalidated. Kristen didn't want all those results invalidated. So we had talked to them about some different ways to address, you know. You know, somebody from taking the survey forty to fifty times. What I will say is this. The survey, though it is forty questions, are all different types of questions. There are some that they're just like. True fall, like, you know, not like, you know, your standard like true false, you know, like, you know, multiple choice type of things like you were in grade school, but. There are a lot of them that are very like survey based, like, you know, like agree, sort of disagree, you know, neutral, disagree, you know. There's some of them like that and there are some of them that are truly have like the free rights. And, you know, we had asked, you know, Dr. Coyle and the UMass team, like, is this a problem that you guys see often? And. They said, honestly, it's not something that they come across too often, but she said on, you know. Looking at a draft, it's almost nine pages. It's like, I don't know how many people really gonna want to spend. That much time doing the survey numerous times. Not that I don't want anybody to not do this survey. But that was kind of the thought as well. What I will say is that. She Dr. Coyle and her team have also been able to analyze. Surveys, even like on a question by question basis. So even if there were concerns that. Someone was trying to. You know, take the survey a bazillion times to see if they could kind of skew it. She said that there are ways on their side to kind of identify and isolate it. So they can even, you know, when they collect their data to do, you know, question by question analysis as well. So even if, say, for example, somebody really truly wanted to take this a bazillion times. Their data would could still, I think the data like as a whole could still be a positive, even though, you know, they may be trying to skew it. She said, you know, there there is no way to one hundred percent say. No, that like you can't forbid, but. But they are aware that that was a concern that was brought up by us already and they're already on the lookout for it. So I I don't want to dissuade people, you know, and I don't want to encourage people from taking it eighty times because. Please don't, but but we still want you at least to do it once. That would be great.
Okay, cool. Yeah. Thank you, Victoria.
Yeah.
Thank you. Virginia, you have your hands up.
You hear me?
I guess we can.
Thank you. My question is, does this survey cost the town to participate in?
It shouldn't, Ginny. So the only thing I would say is that you may have to pay just for the postage to mail it to Boston. I don't know if the envelopes that they're gonna be sending out are already like addressed with a stamp on it. That part I don't know. But otherwise, it shouldn't.
All right. Thank you.
And I think Victoria, you you start your presentation too by saying that we used ARPA funds actually to to pay for some of this. It wasn't a large dollar amount. Sadly, I don't remember what the dollar amount was off the top of my head.
Yeah, thirty thousand.
Yeah. So there was, there was some funds that went into it, but it came from funds we got from the state and feds and it did not come out of. Town budget or or at least town taxes. But even as Victoria points out, we we think this could be some incredible data that comes out of it that will help us. Better serve the residents and better prioritize what we spend our town funds on going forward.
And for those out there who, you know, I and I mean, I know thirty thousand dollars is not a small amount of money and I totally get that. I do want to let people know too, these surveys have been done, you know, throughout several cities and towns already through the Commonwealth. Again, to identify areas of need. Some some surveys have focused more purely on a senior center. Some of them have focused on aging in place as a whole. Some of them have focused on kind of a combo and I would say like, and Kristen can, you know, chime in on this as well. It seems like. I think our survey is meant to be really like kind of a catchall. And we are at an advantage because the way that UMass Gerontology normally does their studies is that. They usually focus only on, you know, seniors sixteen and older because that's their area of focus. And that they usually only send surveys out to about five thousand residents. Per towns, but again, Berlin is one of the smallest, if not the smallest town that they've worked with. So. Because of the fact that our size is so small, we were able to broaden it out. So now we can get more of more Berliners involved in this. Because that is, and I think that that's something that's vital because. You know, I would, I would want to hear from, you know, any senior especially, but I also want to hear from those two who are, you know, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Who, you know, maybe college age and who may be thinking about, you know, like down the road, like, you know, do they want to continue to live in Berlin, you know? Do they feel like that they can find housing that's affordable? You know, do they, you know, do where do they see themselves? Because. You need, you need both sides of this, I think, to continue to help Berlin grow and thrive. So we're, like I said, we are at a distinct advantage, I think, with the survey because. This survey is really, I think, gonna work for us to give us the parameters to. Be able to survey not just, you know, one specific age group or one one specific bracket, but we really can expand this. And like I said, because Berlin's so small, they were like, well, you know, if you've only got, you know, thirty four hundred people, we can then, you know, mail this out to every, you know, we can, we can expand what we can offer. We can. Offer a hard paper copy mailed to more residents than they would normally, you know, had we sent been like a bigger town. So I I think, like I said, you know. I I think we're gonna get hopefully a good bang for our buck and I think that that also is gonna, you know. Be on part on you guys as the residents, you know. Your feedback is really what's I is really what's gonna make this survey shine. Because, you know, if you're happy, we want to know it. If you have, if you have feedback, we want to know it and. It it definitely is gonna give, you know, not only Council on Aging and Social Services, not only the Select Board, it's gonna give numerous departments info. For us to push to move forward.
Do you know if neighboring towns are are participating as well?
As of right now, so they I will link this on. I can send out the information I can post on on Facebook as well. So they have their own website. And they post publicly every research paper that they've completed for various cities and towns. As the last I checked, now again, this was about a month or so ago, the last that I saw the closest town that had completed the assessment was in Littleton.
Wow.
Because Littleton is also like in the process, I think, of getting a new. Senior center and part of what they wanted the survey for was about, you know, expanding services for that. Boston has used them. A lot of this town's actually out towards Western Mass has used them. And it's interesting because some of the towns have done a regional. A survey as well. I believe that Nantucket, all the towns in Nantucket did a regional. Did a regional one not too long ago. And then I believe out where Margaret is towards Deerfield, they had a regional survey that went out towards the. Think it was towards like mid last year, they had a survey. So hypothetically. If, say, for example, like Bolton or Boylston or another town wanted to participate in something like this down the road. There's nothing to say then that like, you know, like Berlin's already got the stepping stone from twenty twenty three. You know, who's to say that like down the road, like if there's not a regional one, it'd be very interesting to see, you know, how Berlin would then compare to, you know, where we are now.
And that's what I was thinking. I was wondering what neighboring towns have done and what they've asked for and looked at and how Berlin would compare to. You know, towns our size and, you know, potentially in the same, you know, fiscal predicament and and. Makeup that we have. So no, if you can pop that link out, that would be kind of interesting to see. You know, what's been said. So no, if you can pop that link out, that would be kind of interesting to see, um, you know, what's been said.
And I, I think too with, with this, I mean, I didn't honestly know about it until one day. I don't know how they got in my email link. And I was, and I, and I took a meeting because I was just curious. Um, and when the information was given, you know, I was looking at it, you know, for, you know, more of the council on aging side. But hearing about it more and more, it's like, well, this is still something that people can, you know, that the town can use as a benefactor, not just. Um, you know, not just it as, uh, you know, not just it for the council. So I, like I said, I think again, Berlin's distinct size is an advantage in this. Because, you know, I mean, again, if you had something like the size of Shrewsbury or even something the size of Worcester and you've got a huge population, now you're only going to be getting a smidgen. Of it being, you know, paper copies mailed out, you're going to have, you know, potentially a virtual option. But, you know, the response rate, I think, would be very interesting to see, um, again, because. There's not going to necessarily be as much access for it as it would be with us for Berlin where, you know, we're going to be able to do a little bit more for people.
We can always remind people at our meetings or, you know, maybe ask Mary, um, you know, kindly, once it's out, pop it up on the Berlin town.
I'm gonna, oh, and I apologize to the, to the residents of Berlin. I'm gonna like hype this up like there's no tomorrow. So we're going to put the information everywhere. Um, honestly, like it, because it's needed. And, you know, we want to make sure that people, that people are able to, you know, understand. We want to make sure that people have, you know, if they, like I said, if they have questions, we want to make this as easy for them as possible. And like I said, it's not, I, I always encourage people to call me when they have questions. But for this, I, I really do want to steer people towards UMass Boston directly. You will have, you know, access, um, you know, through the phone number and things like that. But I really just want to make sure that, you know, confidentiality is going to be kept. Um, and that I think is really important as well. So I'm hopeful that this is really going to be, um, that this is really going to be helpful for us. I really am. But, um, oh, I just found the, I just found this, the thing. So I'm just gonna just share my screen one more time, just so you all can see.
Janet, I do see your hand up. We'll get you in just a moment.
So this is, um, so this is their site. So basically, um, hold on just a sec. My, my mouse does not like me today. All right. Like this. Okay. So, um, for those of you who can't see it, it does say that like the center has worked with about forty municipalities. And again, like this is through last year. Um, and as you can kind of see, like near where we are here in Berlin. We get a little, get a little swath of Central Mass that really hasn't used it yet. So I think it will be really interesting to see too, because again, we are going to be the first municipality in Central Mass that has done this survey. I would not be surprised. And I have talked to other council aging directors and I've talked to, um, even the Shova Boards of Health about this survey. Because there are other cities and towns that are struggling and they're trying to figure out, you know, what their next steps are going to be as well. So I suspect that UMass Boston is going to begin some more business, um, you know. And I, I think, like I said, there are going to be, I think, some cities and towns that are going to be very curious to see what Berlin has. Part of what the, a set, part of what their research is going to show as well is it's going to compare Berlin to other cities and towns of similar size. Cause Berlin's not going to compare to Worcester on anything really. So like that comparison would be moot. But, you know, if Berlin compared to say a place like Ashby or Berlin compared to a place like, um, you know, some of the places down towards the Cape. That may have smaller populations and like, how were they able to use their funding or, you know, what, what are these different cities and towns using their funding for? It'd be very curious. Um, you know, and again, just something for us to, for us to see, you know. And again, like, there's no perfect answer, you know. Um, and there's going to be just different things. Again, Berlin has a huge senior population. And everybody I talk to that I tell them that Berlin has over thirty percent seniors, they look at me like I have six heads. And they're like, but you're so small. I'm like, that doesn't matter. It, this is still what's here. And like I said, and that's an extremely high rate for, you know, again, it's very especially a small town. So, um, but yeah, I just wanted to kind of, uh, zoom in for you guys to see. So it looks like Northampton, the one that I was telling you guys about, uh, the Northampton, um, Deerfield area had a survey last year. Oh, my goodness.
Milton town, yeah.
Hold on.
Well, that's what townies do, Victoria. You know, we, we grow up here, we get old and we just stay.
And that's, and like I said, but it's like your needs at twenty are not going to be your needs at sixty, which are not going to be your needs at eighty. And I think we have to make sure that we are, and like I, and like I'm showing you guys now, Central Mass has not really been covered yet. Um, but as we continue to move further east, Sudbury had one, I think they did there a few years ago because they got a, a new senior center. Um, Weston and then Lexington. So, you know, again, as you get closer to Boston, you're seeing now these cities and towns have, um. Have completed the survey. And I know with Boston as well, um, with the city of Boston. They're also looking at a lot of an issue as well about e- keeping, uh, elders, uh, aging in place safely. They, I think, were also doing some work as well, um, also to see too about, um, I know that there's a huge coalition in Boston with elders with warding. You know, again, like other, um, other, uh, potential co, um, co-occurring issues that could be existing, you know. Again, depending again, how you want the survey to be done. It will highlight and it will give you information on how big a pro, a potential problem could be. So again, like these may be the grants that you go for. This may be what, you know, we would talk to, you know, um, you know, Senator Kennedy or Rep Gil coin about. Because this is what, you know, this is what the data is showing us. And I would love to tell everybody that, you know, uh, while Berlin is small little hamlet and it's wonderful. Unfortunately, for us to get the funding that we want and the funding that we need, we're too small. And because of that, the way for us to then use our size to our advantage is to get hard data like the survey. Because and if you can go and when you apply for grants and you apply, you know, to get some additional funding. Or you go, you know, at the state level and you're like, listen, here's what Berlin needs. What are you going to do to help us? Now we've got the data that we can use to be like, it's right here. You can't ignore this. And that's, that, that really is vital. Um, I, I wish.
Interesting. In the latest ARP magazine, yes, I get the ARP magazine. Um, I was reading it tonight and they were saying that the, unfortunately, the largest population that is homeless. Of seniors.
Yes.
So, you know, that, I read that and was just like, what? Wouldn't even think of that. So, uh, very timely, Victoria. Again, thank you for doing this.
Yeah, and there's no, I don't want to, like, like I said, I don't want to be, you know, a drama queen or anything like that with this. I just want people to be aware that this is really important. This is a way for you to get your voice heard for any issue that, or any concern that you may have. We, we want the comments because it's still information, you know, good, bad or indifferent. It's information that we can use to move us forward. And all of us want Berlin to move forward. All of us want our residents to be able to safely stay in their homes. And we, all of us want Berlin to thrive for as long as all of these residents want to stay. That is the ultimate goal. And unfortunately, there are a lot of factors working against us. So surveys like this, like I said, it, it gives us the data to push forward and it gives us the opportunity to really make sure that. You know, that, you know, at a municipal level and I know, like, you know, even like, you know, at a neighbor level that we can, we can get what we need done, done.
You're muted, Scott.
Janet, uh, you had a question?
No, I just wanted to say how fortunate the town of Berlin is to be part of this survey. And more importantly, how lucky and fortunate we are to have Victoria. And I am speaking not only for myself, but a ninety-two-year-old aging father. Who has been able to stay at twenty-eight Walnut Street, um, with my sister Susan. And my mother, who recently passed away at twenty-eight Walnut Street because of my sister Susan. But also because of wonderful things that Victoria and some of the other townspeople have done. So staying in the community is so important to the seniors and the elders. And, um, I too with Peg are sixty, so I'll be getting that. But I just, I've been listening to you and I just, I had to speak up Victoria because you are so well put together. And we are so fortunate to have you and I just wanted to say thank you.
Oh, Janet, thank you. I gotta get my husband in the room, Janet, so you can tell this to him. No, I'm kidding.
It's recorded, Victoria. Just play it back.
Great.
The downside of these virtual meetings is that everything is recorded. So you can just play this over and over and over for him.
It's all good. No, and Jenna, I appreciate it. And like I said, this is, this is a team effort. I'm, you know, I'm one of many. And, you know, honestly, I, I mean, I've been a social worker now for ten years. And I, I, I have seen it all when it comes, especially to seniors. I have worked in nursing homes. I have worked in hospitals. I have seen it. It is not where people want to be. And I, I want to help keep Berliners at home where they want to be. For as long as humanly possible. I want the young Berliners to know that they have a voice and that, you know. I want them to be able to stay in Berlin if they so choose to do so. And I think that that, you know, just having that mindset. You know, like I just got my first home. I don't want to move out of it. Like, I want to stay here till I go if at all possible. So, you know, a, and it's the same thing. It's, you know, when you have a place that, you know, you have all these memories and you have all these good times. You, why wouldn't you want to be able to stay and enjoy it? And, and at this point, you know, and I know a lot of people too with Berlin get fearful as well. Because we don't have a nursing home or we don't have assisted livings like other towns do. And sometimes like, sometimes I've seen in my past experience, people will be like, well, at least I still can stay in my community. Like, I'm only like, you know, I'm only like a mile down the road. And that's not an option for Berlin currently. Not saying it never would be. But I, and I think again, like, because Berlin is such a ni- nice tight knit village like of a community. We want people to be able to stay and be able to do what they want to do. And like I said, I want to make sure that, you know, each Berliner's voice is heard to the best of our abilities. You know, we, Kristen and I, when we were meeting with UMass Boston, we wanted to also include questions that parents are going to have about like their kids. And maybe, you know, after school activities for their kids. We wanted to have questions about, you know, again, for younger Berliners. So like, do you really think Berlin's affordable for you? Do you think Berlin's going to have what you're going to need for you to be able to stay in town forty, fifty years if you so choose to do? We want to ask these questions as well because, like I said, for every person in the audience out there, or for every person, you know, in Berlin who is sixteen older. Obviously, we want you to continue to stay and be happy and be healthy for many, many years. But again, it, you also need to focus too, okay, like, how, like, what, what is like the new blood going to think? You know, what are the newer people coming in, especially those like towards like Highland Ridge? Or, you know, some of the newer developments that are coming in as well. Like, we want these people to stay in our community because, you know, it makes Berlin Berlin. So, Janet, I thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry. I was going to say Janet, you, you, uh, stole, uh, stole my line here. Um, but that's okay. Uh, it's, it's even better coming from you. I was going to thank Victoria for all the work that she's done on the survey. It's really impressive. And, um, I could speak on this topic for days, but I'll keep it brief. Um, Berlin is at a crossroads. It's one of the things that attracted me to the community to begin with. Because you have the wonderful rural nature of the community that everybody loves. But you need to bring in the business on the outskirts so that the tax burden is not borne by the residents. And you have a large senior population and a lot of seniors on, are, are on fixed incomes. And that's a huge challenge. And there are many, many, many challenges that come with that. But, you know, one of the reasons that we went broad with the survey is we're looking to the future. What do we want to build here that attracts people of all, you know, generations, shapes, sizes? You know, families, children, keeps our seniors in our homes, keeps our young people here. Um, you know, I, I grew up in Leicester and it, one of the things that was the most challenging is, you know, it is very similar to Berlin. In that there are, you know, single family homes on large acres and kids couldn't afford to stay. So they moved out. Um, so how do we provide housing options that are right for everyone, you know, regardless of income? And I think Berlin has done an amazing job looking at a variety of housing products. And I think this survey is another step in that direction to gather additional data so we can figure out where we want to move forward in the future. So I thank Victoria very much for her efforts on this.
Yes, thank you, Victoria.
As a nurse, I can totally understand where she's coming from. And I'd love to say I was only a nurse for ten years. But a little old there, but anyways, um.
Way old Janet, way old.
Have a good night. Thank you for letting.
Thank, thank you, Janet. And, and again, uh, back around, thank you, uh, Victoria for the presentation and, and everything you've done. Uh, I, the town is definitely in a better space and, and has some great resources because of it.
Yeah, and you know, if anybody has any questions, we're going to continue to post the information as it comes out. Um, the, you know, I'm hopeful that we're going to get, um, you know, we'll, we'll get, uh, you know, the postcards out on time. I know that the UMass Boston has been working also with Eloise and James to get an updated census list, just so they know, you know. You know, make sure we have the most accurate addresses. Um, you know, if there's a separate, you know, for those who are potentially going to be receiving a paper mailed at, uh, survey. If there's a secondary address that you want us to use instead to get your survey to you, that's totally fine. Um, we did actually get somebody's address who's a snowbird and I said, perfect. So that's going to UMass Boston so that they know that that's going to get out. Um, and that's totally fine as well. You know, if you, like I said, I, I want people to be able to call and ask questions. But I also don't want, like I said, to, I want to make sure that the anonymity is still there. So if there's something generally that we can answer, I will answer. But if it's, you know, necessarily like question specific, I'm probably going to steer you to UMass Boston directly. Just so you can get your question answered and you can still keep your privacy and we are good to go.
Well, great. Uh, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you all.
Watch it. You're going to start thinking about what you want the blinky sign to say in February when this goes out. Eight, is it eight characters per line or something like that?
Oh, my God, like.
I'll be teaming up with Fred on that one. Challenge accepted, Scott. Challenge accepted.
Um, I think that brings us to, to you, Kristen, for the, the sort of last formal presentation of the night. But just some updates to the town, some updates, uh, and, and staffing, uh, across town offices.
Sure. And I'll be brief, um, in case anybody has questions. Um, I am happy to report, I have now passed, believe it or not, the four-month mark. It has been, uh, four months since I last met with you all for coffee talk and I think things are going really well. I've had the opportunity to get out and meet with a lot of, you know, groups in the community, boards, commissions, volunteers, residents. I have tried to keep true to keeping my door open as much as possible, both physically and metaphorically. In that you don't have to have an appointment. You can come on by and provided I'm not in a meeting, I'm happy to, you know, speak with you. And I've had a lot of folks that just come into the town office that wander into my office and that's great. And I learn a lot, um, from people that do that and in hear different opinions and what people are, are interested in talking about in the community. So, um, I thank everybody for being very welcoming and very open with me. It's been very helpful in, um, educating me on what some of the priorities are here. Um, so there's a lot to do and I've been kept quite busy and will continue to be so. Um, very busy, small community. And that's great because I like to be busy. So, um, with that, we are in budget season. And, um, basically, we are in the thick of it. There are a lot of FinCom meetings going on. Capital planning is meeting. The Select Board is meeting. Last week, the Select Board met and approved a small portion of the budget. Some of the smaller budgets that were mostly level funded from FY twenty-three with a few small changes here and there. Um, about two point three million of the budget, um, was reviewed at the last Select Board meeting. I then went ahead and reviewed that with the FinCom last night, um, and they did take votes, um, much like the Select Board did on that portion of the budget. So preview of coming attractions. If you're interested, this Monday evening, I will be going through. Um, the bulk of the major departments in the budget, that would be your public safety departments, your public works departments. That's going to bring us up to, um, I would say about ninety percent of the budget. Um, so if you're interested, please tune in. We are in really good shape on the expenditure side of the budget. Had a lot of meetings with departments, really dove into, um, the requests where there were increases. And I have to say, I'm, I'm really impressed with the department heads because there were a lot of decreases, which I didn't anticipate. Um, you know, folks are saying, well, this has gone up here, but I really think maybe we can cut here because of this or because of that. Or, well, we didn't use as much of this, or they found creative ways that they can, you know, use more of something else. Um, you know, it's, it's really refreshing to see a community where they're not like, oh, I just want to take the money and, you know, level funded. And, you know, we're going to use it for this, we'll use it for something else. You have here, um, some really wonderful conscientious, um, passionate department heads. That, um, want to be frugal, uh, with your tax dollars. And I think that that is really reflective and has come out in this budget process. So, um, we are really preliminarily in the revenue portion of the process. Um, I'm actually at the Mass Municipal Association Annual Meeting where they give the preliminary state numbers. So that will provide us, um, some info. So that will provide us, um, some information. We are looking at local receipts and I did have, talk a little bit about uh, revenues with FinCom last night. I will put this large caveat out there that there are a lot of assumptions in this. There are a lot of holes. Um, there are a lot of estimates, um, but I will give you where we're kind of at, at the beginning. And I will share my screen with you. Give me just a moment here. I've gotta make it so I can see it too. Hold on. There we go. Is that large enough to see or do I need to make this a little larger? Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So what you're looking at here basically is a roll-up summary on the revenues and expenses side for FY twenty-three, what was budgeted versus FY twenty-four, what's been requested so far by the departments. Um, on the revenue side, again, I caution you, there are a lot of assumptions made in this. And most things, if you notice, are level-funded with the exception of local receipts, which has gone up by about twenty-five percent. The reason we're comfortable going up and we may actually be able to go up a little bit more than that, I'm not sure yet. We're still working the numbers because we had a large amount of building permits that enabled us to make that local receipt happen as part of the recap sheet for FY twenty-three so that we weren't having to raise and appropriate so much when we came to the tax rate certification for FY twenty-three. Um, part of that is because there were a large number of building permits that were pulled, uh, specifically for the Highland Bridge project. That is done. And there are no other large projects at this time on the horizon for FY twenty-four. So there's fluctuations in this that we're still, you know, estimating and confirming and working to figure out. But overall, your local receipts for, uh, FY twenty-three came in at just under one-point-five million. So we were able to basically capture about one-point-two million of that um, with still a very fiscally, what I would call a fiscally conservative cushion. Um, I know I, I pushed June a little bit on that. I think that she would have liked me to leave a little bit more. Um, and, and I, you know, I understand that and that's her job. Um, I think though, my biggest concern, and I've talked about this, you know, and it came up tonight. The malls are, specifically Solomon Pond is depreciating in value. And so there's a split tax rate in Berlin. And that is so that the businesses bear a significant portion of the tax rate. What happens when businesses leave the mall, the mall starts going down in value. You can't tax them as much. It's all a formula. So what happens is, is you lower the commercial tax amount, that burden starts to get picked up by the residents because of the, the tax rate. And there was going to have to be a fairly significant increase in raise and appropriation of, which is basically a taxation of residents. And we did not want to see large increases in tax bills happening for residents. Um, I mean, nobody wants that ever, but especially not in the economy that we're dealing with right now and having come out of COVID nineteen and inflation and everything that's going on. So, um, one of the ways we were able to do it was taking a really close look at local receipts and estimating more closely. That does have its downside. Now there's less of a cushion there to take in future years. So it depends on how our revenues sit with state aid, with other revenue sources that come in and where we're at with property values, both commercial and residential in future fiscal years. So that is something to keep in mind that there is less of a cushion there now than, than we had before when we were doing our very conservative estimating on local receipts. Um, basically, if you look at the rest, they're all level-funded. Other revenue sources is likely going to change. I don't have some of those numbers yet, so that's why that's a little bit different. But you're looking at somewhere in the ballpark of fifteen to sixteen million in revenue. And we have approximately fifteen and a half million in expense requests from department heads. Um, or departments, rather, excuse me. Um, that does not include the supplemental funding request that departments were allowed to put in for this year. Those were extra items above and beyond that were not um, included in their budget, that were not a contractual increase and that fell above a two percent, um, increase. So those supplemental funding requests totaled up to about sixty-five thousand dollars in total. Um, I also would point out that the expenses right now assume a five percent increase for Berlin Boylston Regional School District as well as Assabit. Now, that is low compared to what we're hearing for numbers from Berlin Boylston. We haven't talked to Assabit yet. They're gonna be coming before the FinCom in the next couple of weeks. Berlin Boylston gave an initial presentation. They're looking at anywhere between a twelve percent and a twenty percent increase. It's something that, um, you know, we've asked them to go back and look at. That's really an unsustainable number for us. I understand that there are significant needs that they've put off over the years. We've done so as well. Um, as you can see, the difference between even this very preliminary estimate of revenues and expenditures, there's not a lot of gap in there, um, for a, a large increase in a funding request such as, you know, even twelve to twenty percent. Um, obviously, we want to do what we can. We want to support, you know, our schools and our students. That's very, very important. But I also don't want to do that to the detriment of other departments such as public safety. So it's, it's really a balancing act. We're still in the very, very early stages of trying to figure everything out here. Um, but one thing I will point out at the bottom of this spreadsheet is you are running somewhere in the ballpark of one-point-eight million in excess levy capacity. Give or take. I mean, I would almost say give or take a million because those numbers are still very, very, um, you know, preliminary. That shows fiscal conservativeness on behalf of the town and, and restraint on behalf of the select board and the departments and your finance team. You're basically not using all of the taxation capacity that you could. So you could be taxing a lot more, but you're saying, we don't need that. We're just taking what we need. Um, and I really like that. And I think, you know, there's something called level-funded budgeting and there's something called level-service budgeting. And there's something called a two-and-a-half percent increase over what I would call a level service budget. We want to make sure that we're maintaining the service levels that we have using the supplemental request process to request additional services in areas that we feel that we need them. But not just saying automatically like, oh, sure, let's put an extra ten grand in here because I'm sure we can use it. And, you know, I'm not saying that that's the process that's done everywhere, but it's very looked at finely here, literally down to the dollar line item. I mean, I've seen departments calculating expenses down to sixty dollars a year for postage. I mean, they are really getting into the, the details here to make sure that your tax dollars are being accounted for, spent. I mean, I, they're arguing with vendors and saying, no, we, we can't do an eight percent increase. Can you do a five percent increase or we're gonna go with somebody else? So, um, you do have that excess levy capacity because you have some great people at the helm that are working really hard um, to look at the numbers and to keep those costs down. So, um, page two, again, full of assumptions. This just breaks down your revenues. Um, state aid for FY twenty-four, I've level-funded from the FY twenty-three actual state aid numbers, not the budgeted numbers. So the two-sixty-one, four-seventy-five was the actual final state aid amount for twenty-three. There is hope that we'll get some great numbers this weekend that will show us that we might be able to up that number from two-sixty-one a little bit. Um, as I mentioned, local receipts are based on what we were able to capture as part of the recap process for FY twenty-three. That has not been increased for FY twenty-four, but because of the Highland Ridge permits, having inflated that a fair amount, I don't anticipate being able to increase that much. And I shouldn't use the word inflated. I meant they, it was a one-time source of revenue. When you do a permit, um, an extensive amount of permitting on a large project, that's not a long-term revenue source that you can depend on year over year. Um, basically, let's see, everything else on here is assumed. Um, one of the reasons that other revenue source number, if you look at here, is low, is because we don't know if there's gonna be a contingency needed for capital for Berlin Memorial, uh, as there was for FY twenty-three. So that's one of the reasons that number is off a little bit there. Um, and then again, your estimated obligations, what people like to call the backside of the cherry sheet, that's the money that the state claws back from you. While they give it to you at the same time, they take it away. Um, that would be for your library, your charges and assessments like mosquito pest, mosquito control. Um, and then also the money that goes to, um, assessors overlay for estimated, um, abatements and exemptions. So also, one of the assumptions here is that the debt service for Tejantow is the same as last year. I have reached out to the schools to confirm that, but I haven't gotten that number back yet. I have confirmed that the debt service, uh, the debt for the Highway Barn is that two-ninety-one, one-seventy-five. Um, so I've confirmed that with the treasure collector, so that is a firm number. Um, so this is basically the budget that the board looked at, um, on the ninth of January. And just to give you a little bit of a preview, the, or a review, rather, the items that are highlighted in yellow are the budgets that have been discussed. And if you go down to, sorry to make you dizzy, um, if you go down to the bottom, you'll see basically out of a you know, fifteen and a half million dollar requested budget, uh, so far about two-point-three million in requests have been reviewed and voted upon um, as approved. Now, uh, we're gonna be looking at us, another approximately twelve million dollars on Monday night because those are your big departments. So that's going to be smaller number of line items, larger amount of money. Um, does, that's kind of what I had on the budget. I don't want to go on too long. Does anyone have any questions?
No, we still have a couple more months to, we've got about a month and a half still to, to work on this and finalize it all up and.
Yeah, there's.
Incredible work. Looking at all little details, plus the, as you point out, the department heads.
Absolutely. And FinCom is working hard as is Capitol, you know, there, I, I am very impressed with the level of dedication from volunteers in the community. Um, and it's not just kind of like to say, oh, I'm on a board. You know, people really get into it and they work hard and it's, it's great to see.
Um, and then there's some staffing changes at town offices.
There are. Um, so we have two major retirements coming up within the next few weeks. Dennis Fearbay, our longtime treasure collector, is going to retire. Um, we wish him well. And, uh, Chief Clark, our fire chief, who has been helping us out for a number of years, is going to retire. He has been overall in the fire service for about fifty-one years. Um, so he's gonna be taking his leave and, um, as you met tonight, the new, um, incoming fire chief, Mike McQuillan. You will also be meeting Paul Redman, who is our incoming treasure collector. He is set to start on February sixth. But if you happen to be around the town offices, the last week of January into the first week of February, he will be in training with Dennis and getting up to speed, spending some time together. Um, Paul comes to us from Lemonster with over six years of experience in treasure collector, um, in the treasure collector world. And prior to that, he worked for Vadar, which is the accounting system that we use um, as a, um, rep for municipalities and basically technical support. So he has a really strong sense of municipality work, numbers, our software services. Um, we're, we're really excited to have him join our team as well.
All right, great. Uh, that is, I think, our formal sort of agenda today. Are there just general questions? Uh, comments that people in the audience want to make, a chance to ask the select board members and, and Kristen? Greg and Chris, do you have commentaries you want to make for tonight?
No, I'm good.
Yeah. We have a, um, if people are like marking events calendars, what town meeting is Monday, May first? And town elections are the following Monday, which it would be Monday, May eighth.
Can't believe we're talking about May already, but it is creeping up on us.
It's why we sort of do budgets this early. I mean, we're only three or four months into the earlier fiscal year, but you know, you have to do the budgets now so they're ready to be printed and sent out to people and you're gonna have them in your homes by sort of early April, so you can get to the, the May meeting with some sort of knowledge of what's going on and a chance to ask questions.
Exactly. And, and speaking of town meeting, um, I do plan to have some information sessions. I like to take the, the tour on the road and go around to hopefully the library, some different buildings in town. Um, and again, my, my door is always open when I can have it open for folks to just come in and ask questions, but I, it was recommended to me that perhaps I do a small budget narrative um, for some of the budgets that have significant changes. And I'm kind of thinking almost of putting together a document with like bullet points that's really straightforward. Um, so I'm, I'm working on that too. And I think getting that maybe out there in advance will help answer some questions that folks have before showing up on town meeting floor.
We, we generally do a coffee talk. Um, when Scott usually, um.
April, I think, like, again, about the time we're mailing everything out. So like the day people sort of get it, we try to have a coffee talk so that we can sort of get questions because it is easier sometimes in forums, even if they're in, in a Zoom session or even in person, just in smaller groups, it's easier to ask questions and, you know, walk up to the mic on the floor. That could be intimidating to some people. Um, and especially if there, there are questions that could be answered and just make you feel more comfortable about the way you're voting ahead of time. I think that is, that is a great use of, of time and energy as well.
Absolutely. And as I've said before, you know, my email is townadmin@townofberlin.com. If you want to contact me, if you want to stop by, I regret to inform you all, I do not remember my phone number. I'm not very good with phone numbers, but, uh, call the town offices and Mary will, I'll get you to me. Um, and, uh, please don't hesitate to reach out with any questions that you have.
I think that might then be a wrap for tonight. I thank everybody who is in attendance, uh, right now. I thank those people who are watching this later on, uh, recorded on, uh, uh, on the various platforms we upload. Uh, and we will see you folks around town. Uh, thank you very much, everyone.
Good night.